We've got time being 7:01. Call the Halifax planning board in session. Members present, Woodman Andrews, Amy Truett, Rick Larry. I don't think anybody else is there, right?
No.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
On the agenda, we have 7 o'clock discussion with town council. Brooks and Drexes, farm that subdivisions. 7:45 Joseph Podersky, 49 Cow Street site plan. Discussion is 285 Oak Street. Halifax Park Plaza with 16 from the street. Pasture Lane status, 101 La Ponce Street. No bills. We have two minutes of meeting minutes, December 16th and January 6th. And miscellaneous correspondence. Do we have a motion to accept the agenda as read?
Motion to accept the agenda as read.
For a second?
One second.
Call the panel?
Aye.
Is that Mr. Hudson that we have with us?
Yes, it is.
Yes.
Would you like a microphone?
Angela, come in.
Want to sit there?
You're welcome.
Just want to sit there?
Do you want to sit?
Yeah, that way we could, I'm sure, like, the TV would be able to just slide down so they don't need to watch it.
Okay, well, I want to thank you for coming in and going over some things with us tonight. If you have some comments to make as far as the A&R's and so forth, I'll give you the floor.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for inviting me. I submitted some materials that I think you guys have. It's sort of an overview of the most important, I think, aspects about approval not required plans. Hopefully, this can be a little bit of a resource for you. And also, I gave you guys a copy of this A&R handbook, which has a lot of really useful information about approval not required plans in there. There's a lot of case law that can get a little complicated sometimes. If the board ever has a particular case that you have questions about, you know, I'd be happy to help out. So please let me know, because a lot of these situations can be kind of fact-specific. So basically, the primary legal authority for A&R plans is Chapter 41, Section 81p. And I've set forth some of the provisions of that statute in the materials. Some of them, I won't read through them all. Some of the more important points are that this is a process for someone who feels that their division of land into lots does not require subdivision approval to get that division approved by the planning board. And it's intended to be a relatively quick process. Has to be done within 21 days, and there's no public hearing called for. And the key in that subparagraf B at the end there that I underlined is, I think the key to that statute is, "Such endorsement shall not be withheld unless such plan shows a subdivision." And in a minute, well, I'll get to, you know, the definition of subdivision, what exactly that means. So another very significant aspect of the statute is the constructive approval. If the board doesn't act and notify the town clerk of their action on an A&R plan application within the 21 days, then it's constructively approved, so the person, you know, gets their approval. So that's an important thing to keep in mind.
Anyhow, actually, I think it's 14.
Well, that's something that I'm gonna get to. I noticed that. So I'll talk about that in a minute. So on the second page, that provision in 81p, you know, that it can only be denied if it shows a subdivision. Here's in Chapter 41, Section 81l, is the definition of subdivision, which I have set forth here. And I'll just read this one, the most important part of that. It says, "Provided, however, that the division of tract of land into two or more lots shall not be deemed to constitute a subdivision within the meaning of the subdivision control law if, at the time when it is made, every lot within the tract so divided has frontage on, A) a public way or a way which the clerk of the city or town certifies is maintained and used as a public way; or (B) a way shown on a plan theretofore approved and endorsed in accordance with the subdivision control law; or (C) a way in existence when the subdivision control law became effective in the city or town in which the land lies, having in the opinion of the planning board sufficient with suitable grades and adequate construction to provide for the needs of vehicular traffic in relation to the proposed use of the land abutting thereon or served thereby, and for the installation of municipal services to serve such lands in the buildings erected or to be erected thereon." So basically, what this is about is, as you guys, as members of the planning board know, the subdivision control law is primarily about road construction. It's about construction of the subdivision roadway and, you know, the standards for that the roadway has to meet. So this is, the A&R's are basically, we don't need to go through that process because it already has frontage on a road that is one of these types that's described here. That's sort of approval not required in a nutshell. I mean, there's a lot of little looks and crannies of the law, but that's the basic upshot of it. So if it has, if the land has the requisite frontage on one of these kinds of roads, then basically...
Required frontage for the roadway?
Yeah.
To put a road into the subdivision, right?
Yeah, so if it's, let's say, the simplest example, if it's a public way, and someone has a parcel in, they want to divide it. They show a plan where, say, dividing their parcel into two, and both of the lots shown have the requisite amount of frontage. That's really the end, the end.
The frontage off the road that you're gonna put into the subdivision.
Nobody's saying that we wouldn't be making a road, that it would already be on a road.
Right.
Like, for instance, like, you know, the ones on River Street that we did, that...
Yeah, they already had a frontage on the roadway.
Yeah, not, not...
An already existing road, yeah.
That's mine.
So that's basically what we're talking about here. You know, as I just read, it doesn't have to be a public way, it can be one of these other kinds of ways. But the point is that it already has frontage, so we don't have to go through the process of building a new road that meets certain specifications.
Yeah, right, because it's a formal one, because we got a...
Exactly, right. So a couple of other interesting aspects of A&R is that there's a zoning freeze. If someone submits an A&R plan and it gets approved, the use of the land shown on the plan, and I quoted, it's from 48 Mass. Journal of Law, Chapter 48, Section 6, Paragraph 6, and I've quoted that here. The land shown on the plan, the use of the land shown on the plan is frozen for a period of three years from the date of endorsement of the plan. So what that means is, it's not a complete freeze of the zoning for that period. It's just the use. So it's not the dimensional aspects of zoning. If the dimensional aspects change, then they're subject to it. But the use, so if there were a change in the allowed uses for the land, they would not apply during that three-year period. So that can be significant sometimes. Another, another aspect of A&R plan applications, and I think that this is what's come up the most for me in terms of questions from the various towns that we have represented as town council, is plans that show zoning violations. And also, I'm gonna get to this briefly in terms of Halifax subdivision regulations, too. If a plan, if an A&R plan that's submitted has the requisite frontage, amount of frontage, on the right kind of a way, let's just say again hypothetically it's a public way, then the fact that it does not meet other zoning requirements under the state law is not a reason to deny it. You can't deny it. In this case law, it's pretty clear.
Okay. A lot of that, I see.
Yeah, so if it doesn't meet the area, if there are other kinds of violation, you know, failure to meet the requirements, it still gets, is entitled to get A&R endorsement. As long as it's got that frontage on the right kind of a road, then it can get it. And what goes along with that is, is that in a situation like that, where the planning board endorses an A&R plan, it doesn't give the plant any, you know, any standing for zoning compliance purposes. And sometimes, this is another thing that I've seen a lot over the years, is that people who are trying to develop their land, they're trying to build something, they will sometimes get an A&R plan endorsed. And then they'll say, "Well, I should get a building permit, you know, because I have this A&R plan." It doesn't, no, it doesn't give any, any standing, you know, status to that, to the land that it's, just because it got an A&R plan endorsed. So the last thing is, and I just, I just wanted to note that, which you already kind of already have, that the Halifax subdivision regulations concerning plans not requiring approval have a couple of things that seem to be a little bit inconsistent with the state law. For example, one is the 14 days. And it actually, as you know, it actually says that it's constructively approved if you don't do it within 14 days. I'm just sort of calling that out, just recognizing it. I'm not really sure...
Doesn't seem like very, doesn't seem like very long.
No.
Especially when you have board meetings like every other week.
Right.
And also, it doesn't have a big window there.
Right.
And if something gets overlooked, then, hey, guess what, it comes with A&R.
Yeah, and it's like the town itself giving itself less time to deal with these.
Yeah.
It's, yeah, it's kind of a little bit hard to understand. And the other thing is, is this paragraph F9, which is, it says that, "Information to be included on plans. A statement stating that said division of land is not in violation of the zoning bylaw, or a note mentioning an applicable Board of Appeals to suit." Well, like I said, just said a little while ago, noncompliance with the zoning bylaw is not a reason to deny an A&R plan. So I guess there's, you know, just requiring that information to be provided, you know, I guess, okay, that's fine. But again, it seems like it's potentially inconsistent with that, you know, that you can't deny the plan because it shows a zoning violation. So those are the high points that I wanted to hit. I've included some copies of some of these statutes. And the Smalley case, which basically stands for the fact that this point about showing a zoning violation is not a reason for denying the plan. So those are basically the high points that I wanted to hit. If you guys have questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
81l.
Okay, the two buildings?
Yeah.
Two different buildings.
Yeah, so one of the lots, when you subdivide, needs 20 feet of frontage, is that what it is? Or more, depending on the town?
Well, you know, the case law that I've looked on that, you know, there isn't a lot of case law on it, but I think that it doesn't, they don't really need any frontage. As long as they have the building, those buildings, they should get it. But again, along with that is this issue of the fact that they get the A&R endorsement does not make the lots buildable, you know, it just, it just doesn't. It doesn't give those lots any standing for zoning compliance purposes, or to get a building permit, anything like that. And again, some of these situations can be very fact-specific. If you guys had a, got an application like that, you know, I'd be happy to help you out with, you know, dealing with the specific facts of it.
Okay. So as long as it has the frontage, so if somebody came to us with an A&R and they didn't have enough frontage, then what? Like, even if it was, so we had to have 150 feet of frontage, what if it had 148?
Yeah, if it doesn't have enough frontage, then it should not be endorsed. The only, the only exception to that is sometimes people will submit A&R plans that show parts of lots that don't have the requisite frontage, maybe even like a landlocked one. As long as they identify that as not a buildable lot, then it can be endorsed. But it has to identify that, like you said, if it doesn't have enough frontage, then it has to be identified as a lot, you know, not a buildable lot, or some words to that effect. Otherwise, it would be a reason to deny it.
And if it was landlocked, I was under the impression that we weren't supposed to create any landlocked lots?
Again, if it, if it's identified as not a buildable lot, then they, then you can do it. And one of the examples of when that might happen is sometimes people do these kinds of plans when they are, want to convey land to a neighbor or something like that. So it might, it might be for that purpose, something like that.
Okay. Do you have any questions, Gordon?
If you had, if you had somebody who had a lot, and they now don't have enough frontage to meet the requirements that we have today, but they did when they built the house, and they want to sell off excess land in the back, which doesn't bring their lot down under the, call it, under the 40,000 square feet, is that still permissible to sign that if the piece they're cutting off, they say, is not doable?
Yeah, if I understand your fact situation, if somebody wanted to maybe sell off some land to a neighbor or something like that in the back of their lot, yes, as long as they identify that as not a buildable lot. But again, it always comes along with that proviso that it doesn't give the land any sort of zoning compliance status. So somebody might create a zoning problem for themselves if they actually do that. You know, if they, if they have a lot and then they sell some off and they make, turn, you know, they make themselves nonconforming, they could, they...
Well, they're still keeping the square footage, you're saying, you need for a buildable lot.
Oh, okay.
They just don't have the frontage.
Yeah.
But, you know, they built their, you know, with insufficient frontage, but the house is there, it's approved. Then down the road, they want to sell some backland, but they're still keeping the 40,000 square foot lot, but it doesn't have the frontage they need, you know, for an A&R.
Yeah, I mean, so it's, in terms of A&R plans, as long as that parcel is identified as not buildable lot, then I would say it should be approved.
You'd only hurt them if they sold enough, or they wouldn't have if they were...
Yeah, if they were creating some kind of a zoning noncompliance for themselves.
Okay, thank you.
So that would mean that as long as, so they were nonconforming, so it would have been built before the zoning laws changed to make it nonconforming. And they didn't have enough frontage, but they had over the 40,000 square feet in this town, then it would be okay to sell off backland and make it, because it wouldn't make it more nonconforming, is that correct?
So...
So still keeping, still keeping the more...
It wouldn't make it more nonconforming, yeah.
So this is kind of getting beyond the A&R question a little bit, into the zoning compliance. I mean, that's something that I would want to look at really closely if you had a situation like that, to give you guys an opinion. But on the A&R part of it, I think as long as it's labeled as not buildable lot, then it should be approved.
Okay. Cool.
Thank you.
So it's really about adequate access?
Yeah, you can get into a lot of tricky questions about access, you know, to the lot. And there's a lot of cases, and this A&R handbook goes through a lot of them, about, you know, whether you can actually access the lot over the frontage. So those are kind, those are situations where I would encourage you guys to let me know about those so I can give you advice about them particularly. Because there's a lot of different case law, and I think sometimes it's a little bit hard to distinguish the case, like, what basis the court's decided on for some of them. I mean, some of them are clear. If there's a, like, if it's like a limited access road, it's like there's a guardrail, and you don't have any right to access from like that roadway, like it's a highway or something, you know, you really, it's this concept of illusory, the access is illusory. You know, you have frontage, but in its public way, but you can't use it for access to the lot, so those situations. And then there's a case where they, they use these crazy long, like, necks to their lots, which again, didn't real, they were so crazy and so narrow that they didn't really allow for actual access to the buildable part of the lot, and the court said, "No, you can't do that either." So there can be situations like that that it gets tricky, and I would encourage you guys, if you get something like that, to...
Reach out?
Yeah, reach out, so we can, you know, look at it very closely.
We're looking at our bylaws, and we were gonna be looking into changing it to the 21 days.
Oh.
Yes.
Okay. I actually, in terms of the zoning bylaw, I think maybe I'm gonna be involved with, working with you guys with the town about reviewing the zoning bylaws.
Yes.
So, you know, 14 days is kind of odd, like you said.
It's almost like somebody must have approved that one time, or something, years ago, you know?
You never, you never know.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's kind of a head scratcher. Give yourself less time, you know, to make a decision.
Yes.
Give the board less time, so, you know...
Yeah.
Come in in a holiday week, or they, they're missing a meeting, and, "Hey, 14 days, I'm all set."
Right, yeah. I mean, 21 days is pretty short.
Yeah, it's still short, yeah.
As it is.
You have anything else?
Some group of questions, you guys have any?
No, but I thought it might be nice to let anybody who's here ask the attorney questions about anything we're talking about. What do you think? Anybody have any questions? No, you're good? Okay, I just figured that since you were here, I'd ask.
We appreciate it.
Do you have any thumb up?
I don't think so. I mean, I think I've hit the high points on the materials that I gave to you guys. So those hopefully will be helpful. And again, you know, I'm happy to help you out, you know, if you have a question about a particular situation. Please, please give me a call, you know, be happy to do that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Rich, did you happen to be able to go over any of the stuff around Pasture Lane?
Oh. Pasture Lane?
Off of Hudson, and we have a lot held in bond. Bond? No, 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 we have a lot in lieu of, like, they have to build it last, so we held lots for a little while instead of the bond. And this is one of those...
Just curious, just a little reminder, you got the information for Pasture Lane? I spoke to you about it before.
Yeah, I thought that I had sent you guys something about that, but I could be mistaken, and I apologize if I am. But I'd like to have an opportunity to kind of go back and, you know, refresh my memory about that.
Of course.
I didn't think I had something that was sort of outstanding question. I thought I had answered your questions, but...
You may have.
But if I could check on that and get back to you, that would be great.
Please.
Yeah, that's fine. I just wondered if you had any questions, both, that we needed to answer off on, but for this time.
I mean, that's, so that's a performance, it's a performance guarantee question.
Yeah, it's the ongoing subdivision, it's been over 12 years now, it's not completed. So we're looking to see what the options were for the town.
Yeah. I can tell, I can say just generally that that kind of a situation is, I've encountered, you know, many times in our various towns we represent, and it can be a real problem. Because lots of times, you have these subdivisions that have been around for quite a while, and the planning board gives releases, you know, until like maybe it's a lot way in the back, you know. And it, lots of times, doesn't leave, and I'm just, I mean generally, not necessarily about the specific situation. It doesn't leave the planning board with a lot of options in terms of getting the...
Well, this one, you're just a bad deal from what I understand from it, so just kind of start with it.
Yeah, I mean, it's one thing where there's money, where there's been a deposit of funds, you know, that you can go after. We've had success in some other towns in going to court and getting money released, you know, that was being held, and the developer or the bank was not willing to release it for it to be used where it was supposed to be used, you know, with subdivision. But, you know, when there isn't money, it can be challenging. And that's why I've often said to the planning boards that, you know, really think carefully before releasing the lots. And I know sometimes it can be hard, because lots of times, the developers come for the releases when times are good, and it's might be somebody that you know locally, you know, the developer, and you, you know, you kind of feel like you can trust them, or whatever. And then the, whatever, the market, you know, goes south, or, and then you end up, you know, years later, and you don't have a lot of options in terms of enforcing, getting the roadway completed, things like that. So that's just kind of general.
That's what's happening.
It happens a lot. So I would like to be able to go back to my office and look at that and make sure that I answer all your questions.
Yeah, absolutely, that'd be great. Hey, guys, switch over from A&R, is that...
I think so.
Yeah, I think I'm all set. Got plenty of reading material here.
Yeah, and if you have any questions about any of this stuff that I've given you, definitely, you know, also.
Yeah, I thank you very much for supplying us with the A&R handbook and the law. I feel that's really gonna be helpful.
You're welcome, I hope so.
Thanks. All right, well, if we're all set, then I thank you. Appreciate you coming up. Sorry I couldn't be there tonight, recovering from COVID, and I didn't think anybody wanted to be there, so...
Wow, I hope you feel better, and it's...
I'm feeling better, it's just I didn't want to win right away, have the opportunity to possibly pass the vote around, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, it's good to see you guys, and... Well, it's good to see you guys and hope to be back in a couple of times.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Put a name to a face.
Yeah, definitely. So thank you very much.
Okay, thanks. Okay. Next up, we have Joseph Pajerski.
Where should I set up the easel so everybody can see?
Comcast. Where are you videoing? That would be, you know what? Gordon's going to want to see it, so probably.
That side?
Yeah.
Okay. No problem.
Do you want to share or do you want your? You can share because you know we have a great sound.
I got four. I'm ready whenever you call. Excellent. For the record, Eric Dias, registered professional art, excuse me, engineer, not an architect, with Strongpoint Engineering. Gaitanite representing the Pajerskis, Joseph Jr. and Senior. 49 Carver Street. So before you put site plan review on this site, just, this is the existing emissions plane of the site. Just by way of orientation, the Carver Street is here, the police station is up here. Okay? So we back up to the police station. Roughly a three acre site with split zoning. This side, this dash line represents the zoning boundary. This side over here is the residential zone. This side over here is the commercial business zone. Mr. Pajerski Jr. lives at the dwelling at 37 right here. Okay? So the site is primarily clear at this point in the begun building, some bermage along the front to shield what will eventually happen back here. But the site is clean and in good standing. The proposal is very straightforward. So what we're proposing is contractor bays that will be located in the commercial business zone portion of the property. We have the parking that's required for the contractor bays. We have adequate passage around the building. We can fit a truck around the building if need be. Parking for the industrial use is all kept on the commercial business side of the property, so we're not parking in the residential side. There is an open air storage area that we're proposing right here that does encroach into the residential side. And we're also proposing a pole barn that is going to be used primarily for storage on the residential side. That will be used by both Joe Pajerski Jr. primarily for his personal use, but occasionally maybe for storage of materials relative to the business and things like that. As of right now, we have an entrance coming in on, our entrance comes in on Carver Street right here. We are working on maybe realigning this entrance slightly to the south just so it lines up better with the driveway across the street and not necessarily these people's front door. So when people pull out, their lights aren't shining in their windows, things like that. I know that that was something that they talked about before the ZBA. So we are before the ZBA. We need two special permits for this project. The Pajerskis by trade are welders. So the proposal is that they will occupy one bay in this building and they will rent the other bays to like tenants, something that's allowed within, under the bylaw, maybe a machinist, something like that. So we do need a special permit for the welding component of this. It's required under the zoning bylaw, it's not allowed just simply by right. The other special permit that we need is for the pole barn because it exceeds 884 square feet, it's over the threshold and we are required to get a special permit. The other thing I should have mentioned as I was going through this is both the pole barn and this building have open air spaces on the sides, okay? There's a lien to propose back here. The purpose of this is that occasionally they will need to do outside work. But this allows us a place to get it undercover so they're not working in the sun, they're not working in the rain. And we position it in the back of the building on purpose because we want to keep it as far away from the residential butters as we possibly can. Okay? To shield them from noise and any other nuisance that may come up. We don't anticipate that there will be a lot of outdoor work, but it may happen from time to time, just as the nature of the beast. With regard to utilities and stormwater management, what we've, first of all, utilities, water is going to be municipal. We do have a proposed septic system that's going to go in the back area here. Good news is we have very sandy materials on this site with a great depth of groundwater so we can pretty much get away with anything that we need to with regard to septic and stormwater. We are proposing two stormwater basins on this set of plans. However, since we've submitted these plans, we've gone back to the site and done some additional test pit work. And I think what we can do, we've been crunching the numbers since beginning in the week. I think we're going to revise these plans to eliminate this basin and go with some subsurface infiltration structures to support the catch basins in the parking lot closer to the building. It's just going to give us more green space, more usable area, things like that. I think it's going to look better, it's going to make for a better project. And it's going to help us promote groundwater recharge and water quality a little bit better on the site closer to the source. So I know that there has been some discussion among your staff, just back and forth about perhaps sending this up for peer review. If we choose to do that, we will get you a revised set of plans for the first of the week and those will be the ones that we look at for peer review, if that's okay with everybody. With regard to site lighting, I should talk about that. We are not proposing pole lights throughout this site. We don't want to light this thing up like Fenway. We're proposing wall packs on the building itself. Our intention is to light this up during business hours. When it's not business hours, we may dim the lights or we may need one or two on for security purposes, but that's about it. So we don't want this thing lit up all night. We are proposing a pylon sign or a marquee sign of some sort by the entrance that just shows, you know, what businesses are in here. We don't have a final design for that sign yet, but we do have a table plan that it will conform with the town of Halifax bylaws. And obviously, if it doesn't, we'll have to go to the ZBA and speak a separate, really for that, for whatever reason. But we're not anticipating anything LID or LED, no light up signage, anything like that. It might just be uplift from the ground or back lift from inside.
It would be like lit all night long.
No, and I don't think that there's a need for it too big. We can, we can dim it at night and things like that. The only other thing that I will say is that we started this process backwards. We went to the ZBA first. We were not aware that the ZBA is not allowed to act until we come to the planning board, which is how we got here. We went to our last ZBA meeting, they said, well, have you been to the planning board? We said, no. They said, well, you have to go there. Planning board needs to give us a recommendation before we can act, which is what brought us to you folks today and why we're at a point where we're still juggling a little bit with our stormwater design and stuff like that. But any of the revisions that we make, I don't anticipate, they're not going to change the layout, they're not going to change the concept, they're just going to make for a better project at the end of the day.
Very cool.
Excellent. So that's the gist of it. I'm glad to take any questions that you folks have.
Are you going to provide us with any lighting charts that show us so that we can?
The foot candles in the home areas, we can certainly get that information for you.
Just for the neighbors?
Sure.
Right? Wouldn't you agree with that?
Absolutely. In fact, we, in fact, we work with Omni Light and they've actually spec'd this out. We just haven't added the foot candles to the plan so we can add those on as a supplemental sheet, no problem.
And so what is your thought process on how you're going to move the driveway south? Like, do you have any ideas of how that's going to sort of look?
If you look right now, this straight path out here points right this way. And this curb cut that you see here is these folks driveway.
Yeah.
So I think what we want to do is just take this guy and shift it over so the outline, so the path outlines up with their driveway and not their front door.
Okay.
It was something that they had voiced during the ZBA meetings and we felt that it was something that we could give them to be neighborly, so we're going to do it.
Yeah, makes sense.
Seems like a way to go before we could send this out for, you know, for review anyway. You're going to redesign drainage and?
We're actually almost done. I can have plans back to this board's office by Monday.
The septic system, is that all perfect?
The septic system's not perfect. We found in the bylaw, what we find is that the bylaw reads that we need to be able to show the septic system. It doesn't say that we need the final septic system designed in order to submit for site plan review. So our thought process was submit for site plan review because frankly, if we fail, why go ahead and do the perks and design the septic system and spend that time and effort?
And have to go back and do it again.
And have to go back and do it again. So our thought was, let's get through site plan review and then we'll submit separately to the Board of Health. But I can say with some confidence, based on the test pits that we've done, the system's going here and we've got great soils out there. So I don't anticipate any surprises.
Gravity, Fred?
Gravity. Pump chamber. Small pump chamber is going to come up here only because of a little bit of a mounding that we need to separate for. As far as revised plans and revising the stormwater, I can have those plans back to this board's office on Monday or next week.
So you're going to service this whole building with just that one existing water service?
That is the plan right now, yeah. Obviously, our MEP engineers will size that water service at the end of the day. We may have to go back to the main if the stub that's there isn't big enough. We haven't gotten to that point yet quite with the architecturals, but we anticipate one service will feed the other.
Have you received this from the superintendent of the water?
Yes, we have a note on the plan in this egg on my face that says that we are connecting to the municipal water service in Franklin. That's going to be difficult because we are in Halifax. So we need to revise that note on the plan.
Okay.
And he had another minor comment on there that I think we can address no problem. The other correspondence that we've gotten is from the Board of Health, I should have mentioned that. They've noted that they have a floor drain regulation. They want us to install some floor drains and tight tanks to service those, which we've spoken about and we're going to add to the boards.
We have that right here.
Yeah. We sort of, in a way, and I don't mean to make it sound like we put the cart before the horse anywhere, because it's been, we've been working on this project for quite a while and it's been very well vetted and thought out internally. But when we went to the ZBA, they said, we can't act until the planning board acts. We sort of scrambled to try to get on this meeting as soon as we could and get these wheels in motion.
Perfect.
All right, that looks like a pretty simple plan. The way the process works is we have to send this out to all the boards. They have 30 days to be back to us and make their comments. We can't act until that happens. And in the meantime, I thought if you came in and get it presented, we can take a vote, send it out to a review engineer, you guys can be working with them, get the comments back, that can be put, you know, put it back on for the next meeting. And then, you know, we can move forward with it. But everything can be moved at the same time, is my thought. So what I've been looking for is a motion to send this out to a review engineer, the one who we've been using lately, it's been Amory. We still available for that. So if somebody wanted to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to send this plan out that's going to be revised on Monday?
Say Tuesday.
Tuesday? Okay. The one that, the revised plan from Tuesday out for Amory Engineering.
Motion, is there a second?
One second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
So I would say you should still make changes whenever. Send it out to Amory and they can be in contact with you. And you guys can work on some of the details that they come up with stuff that informs what's going on. And in the meantime, you guys can work together on that.
Okay, that's great. That helps us speed things along that we can coordinate with them to wrap up. Great.
And we'll put you back on the meeting and then have you come back in and go over the final plan so that people can see what's going on and we can move forward from that.
Okay, great. Well, we appreciate your time. We thank you for getting us on the meeting. I know this came together pretty quickly, so thank you all for that. And we look forward to getting this thing done.
Awesome.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Great.
Good job, guys.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you, bud.
I hope you can get that drainage out of there. That would be awesome for the neighbors too.
I don't want that drainage at all. It's on my nice field.
I know.
Love my grass, got to have it.
Kind of stick it a little bit, parky up all over the basin.
Yeah. Put it in the back corner. I can put some trees around, it's, you know, kind of outside, I don't think. How long would that be?
Yeah, that'll look nicer. For all your neighbors too.
I can have the lawn.
They can have some beautiful trees to look at.
It's all about the law, it's right.
Supposed to grow two feet here.
Oh, awesome.
Stuff on the bark.
Oh, yeah? That's awesome.
We want to get that up to like eight to 10 feet and then cap it so it's a nice, nice wall and put hardwood trees at the entrance on either side. So it's a nice, that's what we did in my driveway this summer.
Very cool.
Starting that so we can match that to the entrance so it all, I want to do another one at the far corner so you come down the street, everything will match the entrance way that I can look in.
Very awesome.
I'm trying to find some stone or something, you could put like a street micro or something different, unique.
Yeah, that sounds awesome.
Find something.
Good luck.
Thank you.
You're good. Thank you.
If you give people to sign in?
Oh, can you guys sign in for us on that?
Sure.
Please. Thank you. Backwards somehow, like? So you had already read the, what, a health one or you read about it or something?
I got it until a few years old. I don't know that way. I can reset my phone, I can zoom it out. I just want to keep it stable. We can start. But the answer on my question before I even asked, soil laws and everything like that. But then show me the soil law.
Thank you. Thanks, guys. Have a good night.
Thanks, guys. All right, so I think that's all we have from that.
Hey. We have, there's nobody from Liddell there, right?
Nope.
Halifax Park Plaza?
We have a note in our file here from Joanne that she hasn't heard from Conservation.
Okay.
So I had asked for the conservation plans showing the wetland and the conservation allowances and the decisions.
Okay. And Liddell, was there any comments on that?
No, we, we don't have any. I think he's coming back February 3rd and I think that when I was adding to the agenda, I just was forgetting, did I say January, February 3rd, whatever. So I think it's just on.
Pasture Lane, we won't have any update?
Sad, isn't it?
What was that?
Rick said, oh, what else is new? And I said, it's sad, isn't it? That we can't get anything from them, from the owner of Pasture Lane.
Yeah. What else have we done?
I'd like to push the meeting minutes from 1:06:22 off to the next meeting and just state that the plan that we had in front of us at the last meeting to sign was not the one that we had approved with a mandar on the, so the one that we had set forth for off to sign last week wasn't the one that we had gone over with a mandar. It might have been in the file, but it wasn't set to be signed. And I'm just saying that for the record.
All right, so you want to put off the meeting minutes, you said?
Just for the 1:06:20:22.
Okay.
And I think that we just have secretarial to sign the December 16 minutes. So you'll have to come in and sign and Rick and I'll sign this one here.
Okay.
Is that all right?
Then so if I, we already voted, right?
Yes, we did. Yes, we did. And Brendan's not here, so he'll have to come in and sign, or else we can leave it for the next meeting.
Okay.
And then, what else we have?
Just...
So, I guess the ZBA extended or continued till April 6, 2022?
Oh, ZBA? Yes. Who's up?
God, excuse me. Hi. Amy, if you want to sign, the plan is there if you want to sign that tonight. She can hear me. Hi, can you hear me okay?
I'm sorry. I was reading something, and I was not really realizing what you're asking. Same.
Oh, excuse me. I'm just interested in response to the 01 Ponson Street, 101. The new... The brand new plan is on top there. I don't know if you can see that.
Oh, yeah. I saw it earlier in the meeting.
But the original one that you did approve is in the folder.
Right. But what was on the table for us all, because I believe at the last meeting, none of us wanted to sign the one that didn't have the piles and the tub grinders. It wasn't set out for us to be signed.
We didn't want to sign that, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And that's all we were talking about.
We didn't want to sign it.
Right, yeah. That's fine. I'm not saying, huh?
So, what is the last meeting you were looking at? Was the conservation? But the original one was there, was in the folder. So, that one is in the folder again tonight.
Yeah. It's right here.
We also brought a new one.
Do we have more than one to sign? Because we don't...
I believe there's... I believe there's two. I'm not really seeing that. I'm not sure, but I think there's at least, there's at least two.
Okay.
Maybe more.
I have one. But I'll look in the file.
Yeah. If you look in the file, it should... Everything is in there.
Well, this one is...
The one that you brought in today that have the conditions that you wanted put on there, there's five copies of that.
Oh, and they're elasticized?
You brought that in late this afternoon.
They're elasticized?
Yes. There's an elastic around it, there's four, and then there's one separate that the one that she highlighted, the areas that they updated for you. And so, that one, you know, has that written on top for you to sign.
Perfect. So, I think Rick and I can sign it, and then Gordon and Brendan will have to come in.
Right.
All right?
Okay.
Thanks, Joanne.
You're welcome.
So, what's this one? That's not one, because it's the 16th.
Can we do only the 101?
Yeah. See the... When I open this up, yeah, see 12022. 12022. You're going to put 120. I can do that. You want to do it?
Go ahead and do it.
Do you see anything while we're signing these things? And any other correspondence that you want to chat about? Anybody? One more after that. Anybody see anything in correspondence?
I don't see anything.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I have a legit, a motion?
Aye.
All.
Thanks, everybody.